So this is a work session, so this is not under the normal format of information into action items, there'll be no action taken. This is a conversation, community conversation relative to a conversation that has been entertained from the Cuyahoga County Public Library with the Metro Parks throughout its history, has examples of public partnerships and public-private partnerships. And this is a unique opportunity to have a conversation at the community level in a board setting that we hope to take out into a broader scope. But looking at the possibility of a partnership with the Cuyahoga Public Library. With us this morning, we have Sari Felton, the executive director of the Cuyahoga Public Library. She has a number of guests with her that I would like her to take the opportunity to introduce for taking part in their day to be part of this. And we also have with us Paul Pomer, an elected official from the City of Bay Village in the back, one of the councilmen in the area as well. So with that, we have put together some slides from a talking perspective and a conversation. So let me turn it over to Sari to introduce her guest.
Thank you very much. With me this morning is Ed Blakenmore, the president of the Cuyahoga County Public Library Board in Buffalo, another trustee. But I want to start by saying thank you very much, Brian, for allowing me to come. And of course, I'm very pleased to have this opportunity to talk with you. So I just want to, I could talk about the Cuyahoga County Public Library more than the burning talk, but I won't. So let me just say that this is kind of a map showing our system. And I want you to know that we're rated one of the best and busiest public libraries in the nation per capita. We're number one in circulation of large urban library systems. We're also number one per capita in terms of visits to libraries. And so we're very, very busy. We're a very strong library system. And our branches span the county and as you can see from this map, overlapped so many of the places where they're also including Metro Parks. In 2010, the board of trustees approved the largest capital improvement program in the library's 90-year history. And we made a $110 million investment in libraries. And we are almost completed with that. We've replaced nine branch libraries and we're renovating the ninth of the nine renovations. And we have 27 branches, just to remind you about that. And we may well complete the last renovation in Parma Heights. The capital program was funded by leveraging $75 million in notes or bonds. And we paid proceeds out of our operating budget. We had $25 million in savings that we had put aside. And we raised an additional $10 million through private donations and land donations from community partners. I want to comment that co-location with community assets and/or community conveniences has been the determining factor in how we've identified sites for new buildings. So that's been very, very important for us. So we've completed the 18 priority projects that we had identified in 2010. And there are three branches remaining in our library system where we have not made a significant capital investment in more than a decade. And those branches are Bay Village, Boria, and Littleburg Heights. It's our intention at this point to replace Bay Village and Littleburg Heights. And we're exploring those projects right now and to do a renovation project in Boria. As it relates to the Bay Village project, we've been in conversation with the Cleveland Metro Parks about the possibility of a collaboration. We've been fortunate in our replacement projects in recent history, through this capital program, to be able to partner with public entities, with local communities to have land deeds to be able to build these buildings. And in Bay, where there's very little available land for a project like this, this unique opportunity to partner and collaborate is one that we're really pleased to be talking about.
Can you talk about why you want to replace Bay and not just improve it?
Sure. And let me do the next slide and then ask questions if you don't feel it's an option. So we've done some conversations with Bay go events in recent years. And through those conversations, which we had at, you know, local open events, and then we also did an official online survey, we heard that people see the branch as a community meeting place. And libraries have really changed to be less about what we have for people and more about what we do for and with people in our spaces. So as a technology center, as a community convening place, as a place for programming, as a place, Bay has a very high density of home-based businesses. So as a place, that third place in the community where people can run home-based businesses, we're also a place where people are introduced to new technologies. These are becoming increasingly part of our portfolio of services. And we're hearing that specifically. People want more technology training, more spaces for students and home-based businesses and others who engage in quiet study. And then the online survey stood out for us. Of course, collection continues to rank as the most important to Bay residents, as you can see here, but also children's programming, community rooms, and quiet study space is very important. There are limitations within the current building. And we recognize that to offer a true 21st century library experience, as we have in our other locations, we want to consider replacement as the best option. 56% of the residents think building, a new building is a good idea. 30% don't have an opinion. And 12% do not favor a new building. So that's incredibly low percentage. And I will say that when you kind of ask a question like favoring a new building in the abstract where people don't have knowledge about funding or whether it's going to result in bondage or whatever, that a lot of people don't have an opinion because they don't know the cost. And we're considering this as a replacement building that the library would be able to sort the costs for the building we're building.
Do you get more information, sorry, again, on the group that thinks it's a bad option? Does your survey go into why? Or is it just, again, nebulous, they don't really have all the points and there's just...
You know, we know from experience and from communicating with people, 12% is an incredibly low percentage. And we know that people have tremendous sentimentality about library buildings. And so we typically hear from people when they are opposed to the replacement of a building, that it is that sentimentality, that building they've used growing up.
Right.
Or even if people don't use a library building, they, because a lot of people are purchasing materials online, but they just feel that that's always been the one.
Prior to this capital campaign, which pretty much got underway, what, six years ago, the business model, explain the difference between then and now.
Sure. So the Cuyahoga County Public Library has been a kind of regional library system with one common operating budget since its inception in the 1920s. But when it came to build a building, individual communities had to build the building. So it was either a bond issue that was done by a city or a school district. We began to realize that it was really impossible for a school district to put a bond issue on the ballot for the library. And that many of our cities also were not able to do it. We had facilities that were in just, you know, in a terrible condition. And the kind of investment we would have to make would be unrealistic to make in a building that of the age that some of these facilities were. So we convened a community advisory group to help us think through a new model of funding. Oh, you want that, the community advisory group? That's what I thought. And so it was people from all over the county, different capacities, government, business, the clergy, education. And they helped us to think through new options. And it was determined that the library would create a regional capital fund as well to be able to build up own buildings. And then that led into the study of our existing building, the library prioritizing. We've been able to use the money very, very efficiently. And again, it's not a result of any additional tax bill to the residents.
What is the revenue of the library system a year?
We have about $70 million a year. About $65 million of that comes from our taxes, either the state tax from the dental revenue fund or the property tax. And the property tax, of course, has declined over recent years because we are only taxing the communities that we serve, so we don't have the city for some of the subjects we have to handle. But we have also increased other revenue sources. We write about a million dollars worth of grants on the projects today from mostly private foundations. And then the library has become a passport acceptance agency. And we can have your picture taken and you can apply for your passport through any Cuyahoga County Public Library. It's not a major four nights week, and it is a revenue stream for us as is, as how the state department runs it. I will say that just as an example of the kind of customer service we provide, we have been received a combination from the State Department as a top 10 customer service passport location in the United States. And they now want every library to become a ten.
Is everyone here okay? Yes, I'm just making sure that...
Okay.
If anyone has the microphone.
I do have one other question, just another thought. And historically, you were a tenant, not a loaned fee.
Right. So after a building was built, and we did do a primary design, but of course, we worked with our cities and communities and we care a lot about residents, what residents want in our buildings. We then ran the building as a library at no cost, but we became responsible for all of the maintenance and upkeep and major capital investment that occurred over the next 20, 30, or 40 years. So having just completed nine replacement building projects and nine renovations, we have a relatively standard process for communication within the community. Once we formally approve the project to move forward, we will hold community dialogue sessions where residents can come. And we use a kind of world cafe model where we bring different pictures of what libraries look like in the United States as well as all over the world. And we invite residents to give their thoughts and design as well as services. We also provide progress reports to residents on a regular basis through emails and website updates. And we keep the community leadership advised of any key project milestones so that they can participate in the progress of the project. We would, of course, be doing the same process in Bay. And I'm sure we move forward as a collaboration, we'd be pleased to update this group at any time that we are involved in, in terms of participation and communication throughout these our projects. I just wanted to summarize the current state. And I thank Mr. Minkler for helping to give some background on the existing models that we had in the past. So the library owns two buildings outright, including the land. And that is in Chagrin Falls and Parma, one of our buildings in Parma where our administration is attached to a branch. We have one branch that we lease.
Sorry, can you use this just maybe hard for people?
Okay. So we own one building, two buildings outright in Chagrin Falls and one in Parma. We lease one building in Richmond. We have six branches where there are land deeds, meaning we own the building and the property was deeded to us by a city or a school district for as long as there is a library. I mean, you know what? I made a mistake in this slide because there are actually three branches where we own the building outright and the property. And that is South Euclid, Chagrin, and one in Parma. And then there's one branch in which we space in Richmond, six branches with land deeds. And then there are 18 remaining branches where the buildings and property are owned by the city or school district. And that's the case in Bay Village. So as we've worked with cities and school districts, we hope that, you know, our interest in building here, the Lake Erie Nature Center on Wolf Road, is viewed as a unique public partnership. And that together, we can create new opportunities for our residents and also community projects. So thank you. And I welcome questions.
Sean, do you want to continue first? We also have guests from Lake Erie Nature and Science Center, including Catherine Tinko, a member of her board. We also have Pre Finsit from the Bay Arts Community Area as well in attendance. And again, this is a work session, so we're providing information right now. Sean will provide some access points to Metro Parks, the reservation plan concept that we work through, kind of looking at that and then opening it up for dialogue.
This is Sari. Just one question.
Sure.
Looking at the map you have, very roughly is our, is our location. I see the Bay Village dot...
Sure, I think we'll roll through.
You'll get that. Great, thanks.
Thank you, Brian. I think it's going to help us to look at Huntington Reservation as a whole here where Huntington Reservation was brought into the Metro Park system in 1922 through land donation from John Huntington. The park itself is just over 100 acres. It's bounded on the east by residential, I'm sorry, on the east by Cohoon Park, which is City of Bay Village, on the west by residential, south side by Wolf, and on the north side by the beach. Prior to the lakefront acquisition of the state parks, this was Cleveland Metro Park's only park that had direct lake access. The park itself is bisepted by Porter Creek. Porter Creek drains a good portion of the western side of Bay Village and it actually reaches into small parts of Avon Lake and Westlake. The creek you can see here has some unique history, as does an old alignment that was the old inner-urban connection between Cleveland and Lorraine and Point West as well. So the park has some very unique history, some of which still stands today, both the abutments and piers for the former inner-urban and then the water tower and pump house from John Huntington. The interesting thing about the park here, and we can go into some of the numbers just in the next slide, is that Porter Creek Road itself, which bisects the park north-south, is used by both park visitors and commuters. And also, we believe the school district still utilizes it for a bus route. So the road itself brings people through the reservation daily for commuting, for uses other than park use.
And it's a public driveway or a park drive?
It is a park drive. It's owned by Cleveland Metro Parks, maintained by the Cleveland Metro Parks. Where we're going to be talking about primarily is the southern section up of the park here. Brian had mentioned some of the affiliates that are in the room with us today. And when we look back at the vision statement for Huntington, you can see that there are some themes in that vision statement that carries to the discussion today, and that is strengthen the affiliate use areas, creating a comprehensive campus, integrate the trails and outdoor activities, and this other tenant year circulation. And that's one thing that we want to concentrate on as we have this open discussion today.
Can I ask a question about Porter Creek too? It's open the entire way except for where it goes under the roadways, as opposed?
Correct. The creek itself has been armored with some WP era walls in this section and in this section, but for the most part is open. It's still connected to floodplain. It's a generally healthy creek.
And about how wide is it? Is it something people can get over? Is it...
No.
So it's definitely not...
You're not going to do it in one league. You will definitely have fun playing in the creek, but you're in the creek.
Okay.
And it gets rather deep and we've got a pretty steep ravine and cliff wall as you approach the beach. Let's jump into some of the visitation numbers quickly here because I think this is going to give you an idea of the traffic on Porter Creek Road. So we see about 922,000 visits, if you will, into the park on an annual basis. And of those, 598,000 come to literally use the park. So you can see that there's a decent amount, about 1,200, 1,300 vehicles a day that likely use Porter Creek for commuter or for bisecting or cutting through the park. I'm not going to go into great detail on the numbers of our partners and affiliates, but you can see here that they are very popular and very high-functioning and well-run affiliates between the Lake Erie Nature and Science Center and Bay Arts. So what we wanted to do was just take a really quick, quick look at what a potential library using some of the footprints and examples that were provided in the Cuyahoga County Public Library's recent developments and place that in the park. And again, we have not done an extensive amount of study here. We're just putting pencil on paper, if you will. In that, we wanted to see if we could go back to the vision statement and make some of those connections in terms of improving circulation, creating that campus. So what you're looking at is a very rough sketch of what a potential library location could look like in this area. And bouncing back here, I want you to see that we're concentrating in this open field. And I also want to give you some attention here on Porter Creek, on Porter Creek Drive. So you've seen the numbers and you've seen in terms of the traffic volumes that can be on Porter Creek. Specifically, two things to pay attention to are parking. The parking for Lake Erie Nature and Science Center is accessed delivery on each side of the roadway aisles. So when you have head-in parking immediately adjacent to a roadway, that does create some potential conflicts. And then another item to take note is the offset of these intersections between Porter Creek and Beach. Now, if you're going to have an offset intersection, this is the way to do it because you don't have conflicting left terms. But at the same time, you want to avoid offset intersections if you can. So when we took into account that situation, we then looked at, knowing that Porter Creek is an important drive, swinging Porter Creek through the site and having a T-intersection on Wolf, which then would provide for some dedicated and a safer experience here near the parking for Lake Erie Nature and Science Center and then providing a cul-de-sac. So then all access to the park would then take place at this T-intersection. And you can see by the way we align things here that we're giving the precedence to and the preference to these movements rather than funneling traffic through the current parking lot for Lake Erie Nature and Science Center. The other thing we took a look at was the use of the fields at Huntington. You can see that there are two ball fields here. These are not utilized heavily. There are no official leagues or organizations who utilize these fields. There is a high demand, we have found, for multi-sport, lacrosse, soccer, et cetera. And again, this is just pencil on paper. So we're taking that first step at looking at how we could integrate into sport uses, integrate in and add to the 1.8 miles of trail that's already at Huntington, connect to Lake Erie Nature Science Center, try and find those complements and continue to utilize the campus while at the same time protecting some of those environments, protecting Porter Creek, leaving the stand trees along Wolf and making sure that we also have picnic facilities as the canopy at Wolf today is a popular one. Do you want to go into any more detail, Brian?
Yeah, I think you've got the individual of the car that headed into the area.
So this would be if you're headed south towards Wolf. These are the head-in parking spaces from Porter Creek Drive. And I can tell you, having three kids and going to the nature center often, we always try and park on the nature center side of the drive. I know that there is attempted speed controls through here. Our rangers do a great job of observing this area. But at the same time, when you have little kids and the nature center is a very, very popular amenity and affiliate, this is a situation that we are aware of and we would like to improve the safety. This is the view from the nature center area to the open field right to the north of Wolf. And this is the view looking from the Wolf picnic area. This is the canopy back towards the nature center itself. And then this is a view closer up to the actual site, so there's that ball diamond that rested on the south side of that field. Oops, sorry. So we wanted to open up for discussion and maybe if you sort of...
Ryan, can I ask one question about the ball diamonds and the use of the ball diamonds? What sort of, what sort of, would the multi-sport field be adequate for them, do you think? Or the usage of the, I mean, how often are both of them used?
Well, so how we would answer the question, the diamonds, the way they're currently positioned, the way you play, they actually end up playing into each other with today's technology. You end up having a conflict if there were pickup means. There's no regularly scheduled leagues there. There's also, you know, backstops behind them so they don't meet current safety standards. And so they're more of what we would call kind of pickup sprung fields to that degree. I think the mindfulness is, you know, we're focusing maybe on the ball field, but there's programmatic elements that go there as well. So the science center uses them for a rocket program or summer camps or other things. But then providing, there are periods of time when it's wet and so providing adequate drainage and taking care of that, adding a multi-use component. There certainly feels that there's a park over there, but allowing for the continuance of open green space within the park framework is something that we were looking to try to preserve through this, again, potential partnership. I think it's one of the things we've looked at, the flow. I heard from when I first got here, the science center has been very concerned. Our rangers have done a very good job, in fact, I think ticketed one of the people in the audience potentially for speeding through the area. I won't name who that is, but they've done a very, very good job of taking care of, taking care of how that traffic flow is. But it still is a concern for Metro Parks. And much how some of these other facilities have evolved, you know, the partner with the Lake Erie Nature and Science Center at the time, you know, may have gotten the same level of conversation when it came into the fold of Metro Parks. And this is again, one of those conversations from a regional perspective. The easy answer would be to say, you know, that's not what we're going to do. But we wanted to open the dialogue up with the library, with our affiliates, with the community, and with the board to see if this dialogue could continue on.
To that point about traffic, if we were to go forward with this, had any consideration or would we be worth considering not allowing Porter Creek Road to go all the way through? I mean, just have a library access and have a science center access, or does that hurt everyone more? Because I've gotten calls about the same issue and the rangers, I agree, have done a great job of trying to slow down traffic, but it sounds like it's a big...
Do we have a larger area where we can pull back? Because I imagine this is strategically located, this cut through.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, I mean, it's, as we know, certain areas of Valley Parkway are very similar to having, and, you know, using the cut-throughs, path-throughs, you know, views, it's just maybe some people's only access to the park. I believe that the continuation of the road should go through to a fashion from where you back up to the other side there to Cohoon on this side. There isn't a whole lot of access that allows for our patrons to have a view through the park. The road infrastructure north of the line along Porter Creek right before has been most recently been repaved in the last few years to clean up that interior pavement work. We do get a large amount of guests relative to the work that, you know, when the summer season is on track. We originally talked in some length of where it could potentially go, Huntington Playhouse. We're still in the process of closing up the tenant relationship with Town of Aros relative to the Huntington Playhouse and adaptive reuse of that facility at some point.
I guess that kind of gives context. And I know we want to hear from other stakeholders on the site, but apart from the library, we generally look at this traffic matter, right? In other words, so it's kind of neutral in terms of how we reroute the road, how we would service the science center and deal with what they are as well, correct?
The processes, I've been out there when they've done the traffic counts and the studies. I think we would want a more robust where we'd actually lay, you know, the line over in a different peak times. But when you look at the possibility of potentially closing off part of Porter Creek and closing that, that would be an interesting conversation, I think, to have with city officials as well from a safety access point standpoint on both north and south sides of Wolf and Lake Road. Sean, anything you'd like to add?
In terms of the traffic impact in traffic study, what we found is, especially with the city's operation of the signal up at Lake Road, because we actually don't operate or own any traffic signals in the park district. So already that traffic signal serves both the north and southern portion of the reservation that signal's activated by the city. We would have to do a similar analysis, both here that has posed T-intersection on Don River, the signal, but we absolutely have to go with T-inter.
But I guess what I'm getting at is, if you forget for a moment doing anything with the ball field, doing anything there at all, but you just simply focus on rerouting, just addressing traffic circulation, if that's something that we are looking at seriously one way or another, or where do we see that in a run-up priority?
We have been studying, in fact, I know when I first got here a few years ago, we were doing some sketches in terms of better aligning Porter Creek Drive with, sorry, jump here, to Beach, as you can see here. One of the factors that we need to take into consideration is we have a very green system for the heating and cooling at Lake Erie Nature and Science Center. So where we, this open field right here is actually a geothermal field that services...
Today.
Today.
Could you show the, the...
Yes. Just showed up here. So that, that was one of the precluding issues of not being able to align that road even current setting. That's why if this were to occur, we could make that improvement.
So generally speaking, we kinda like that geometry, just for the traffic better.
Yes. We do.
Again, this is our internal staff taking a look at it. They basically looked at footprint of another library system that they had built and kind of forward related and then kind of looked on the creative side of how the facility could interact with the rest of the park like setting. Interesting, over time, when the property came over from Huntington in the mid twenties, the science center was built in, I think, the fifties, if I'm not mistaken?
Nineteen sixty.
Nineteen sixty. So this consideration is very similar to the consideration that was given to the science center to build at that point in time.
And where's the current library at? How far from this location?
That's a good question. I couldn't clarify it, but it's near the, current library is near one of the elementary schools in the village. And so this puts us, you know, more firmly in people's traffic patterns.
So it's more, it's more centered at where, in the current location than to...
Yes.
We're gonna pull up that, and...
Yeah, sorry.
Ryan, can I ask one question? In terms of taking away the ball field, the topo view of the site shows, well, the one that shows the playing field to the east of our property. What, could anything be done? I meant the one that actually shows the, the actual photograph.
In Kahuna?
We're just trying to enlarge the area for...
Yeah, the photograph that shows the broader, the Google map, well...
You want the...
Yeah, the...
Not...
Yeah, so you've got a big field on Calhoun. I realize it's not ours, but is there something that could be, could be done to have, have...
I think it's...
No, 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 I didn't mean build on, I meant to have an alternative place with the ball, yeah, for programming. I wonder, is that something that could be done?
Well, again, I very much appreciate one of the council members coming as well from Bay Village. I think those conversations are very, right, I don't necessarily wanna focus on, it's a multi-use field, and I would love Catherine to tie in, you know, there are rocket programs on it. So this open green space that can be programmed, whether it be part of an event that maybe the library does or part of an event that maybe Bay Arts does. It's really a multi-use field, not necessarily focused on the athletics because of the current, but we would try to build it to standard so that it can be used for maybe a read-and-run program. So you read and you run, you know, a soccer game. So I think lots of different things we're trying to create activities into on this particular area here. So I think the conversations we should have with the city school system, with the village and municipality, and then figuring out how Bay Arts and both Lake Erie Nature and Science Center use it. So, Helen, I'd love to see how you program as well.
Sure. I'll comment on that. We do have a number of camps, family programs and children's programs that take place directly across the street from Lake Erie Nature and Science Center. And so we really do use that field quite a bit. And so those would be some very top priorities for us is to continue programming and of course in collaboration with our partners. In terms of the amount of space we need is some, you know, more detail we can get into. But generally, because it's so close, I don't see us being really, we do walk the children up to the lake via Porter Creek in the tunnel, preschoolers along with our guides and instructors. So we do use quite a bit of the reservation, but I don't know whether we go that further out with actual programs where we need equipment such as rockets or camping supplies.
So the rendering then, the sight plane rendering that Sean gave, the next slide to your point there. So proximity changes, that's a concern for you?
Or is that close enough that it's still workable?
I think in terms of the size, the geothermal field would be an adequate size. The open lawn that's referenced, as long as there's a safe passage over, which I think there would be, that would be an adequate size for us.
But those are issues to be focused on?
Yes.
And just a small point, I used to be the president of the Bay Arts Club, and we used that large Kahuna field primarily for all recreation soccer. Once a year, there was a Labor Day tournament where 150 teams from around Midwest would come to Bay Village for a big tournament, and we used to use that field. We created a partnership with Avon Lake where there's now an area called the Walker Road Park, and we built a dozen or so fields over there. So we have less use of this overflow field and the majority of the use is when a mom, coach and a couple of eight-year-olds might decide to hold their practice there. So they would pull their cars up and put out a couple of cones and just run a small practice. So it's very multi-use, as Brian mentioned. I think there were some kids, they ran a little crispy, crispy football thing out there, and the local neighborhood kids would play on the ball field every now and then.
But Kahuna is what, the city generally does the program for?
Yeah, it's a soccer club that runs it in partnership with the city. It's a whole program. In the springtime, they get 1,400, 1,600 kids playing. It's incredible. It's kind of a model for soccer in Northeast Ohio. We're very involved with the Ohio Soccer Association, and they've actually come up to Bay Village to try and figure out how a community of our size can manage a program of that scale. But it's worked for 25 years and continues to operate very well. As I said, this field is just kind of extra space. And when the tournament would come along, we would contact Metro Parks to rent the field. There are a couple of key rocks that are located on the road that move from out in those rural points forward, letting out the soccer. I'll make sure that those are maintained or moved.
High tech.
High depth. Oftentimes it's done by parents that were out there trying to figure out how to grow on that town.
I'd like to hear from that councilman, if you have some thoughts or inputs, if you would like to say something?
Sure. You know, from my viewpoint, as a former soccer coach and holding practices where a multipurpose field is supposed to have the goods, for sure. You don't see a lot of ball games, or you do see families there, pickup games, things like that, but predominantly lacrosse and soccer are very big in Bay Village. And so maybe practice fields and room and run around and play. So from that standpoint, it makes a lot of sense. I share the concern on the road in front of Lake Erie Nature and Science Center. And I think the big point from my perspective is, you know, where the parking spots end, the road begins. And so you don't have pure four feet when you're backing out in a minivan to look and look for... I mean, traffic, because it's very immediate, I think if you said I've got five or six feet on either side and parking spots were set back from the road a little bit, you'd have better sight lines. But because it's tight, because of line maintaining, the trees and things like that, you know, that's always a bit of a safety concern.
The idea of rerouting, just as far as traffic flows, do you have a sense of that as far as just from a community impact, how that corridor functions in the street system?
Seeing this for the first time, I like the concept from, for several reasons. The parking that would be next to the multipurpose field set off, and again, the parking for the nature center set off. And I think because of that, you're segregating activities, allowing people to go directly to that activity. And when you're in those parking lots, people are gonna drive slower, maybe you could even expand the parking over, you know, by the Lake Erie Nature and Science Center. But having that type of flow and separating out the activities makes sense to me at first glance. And I do think a lot of folks, you know, you have a lot of visitors to those fields or the Lake Erie Nature and Science Center, I think accessing that from Wolf Road makes a lot of sense. If you let everybody drive around and drive through the park, I think you're gonna have a lot more cut through traffic that way, I guess. People do like access Bay Arts, things like that. The other question I was asking is, there's a multipurpose path right now, Bay is a very pedestrian community, people love to get out and walk, and sort of extending that multipurpose path that goes from Kahuna Park to the current parking lot, it dumps into a road currently. That's where the multipurpose fields would be. You know, extending that along so you have access all the way over to Lake Erie Nature and Science Center, to the lakefront property, things like that, I think one in there would be a big plus because right now, what people do with kids and small kids and trikes is they just come out on the road. And so again, you're segregating activities, pedestrian walking, you know, I think it's spot full. On the bottom of the library building, it looks like there's two potential spots for it. I know people in Bay, Valley Green Area, and I defer to Catherine and the science center about the location of the building, but it seemed to me that if you split it farther to the east, you'd have a larger green space you'd be maintaining. Sometimes there are scout activities and things like that, and having a larger green space might, might be more user-friendly and not one that was gonna come down the road.
How about the reload issue?
Pardon?
Reload, the relocation issue, do you see that as any kind of...
Road. You know, I'd have to tell, would that come out on to what road on South...
I mean relocation from the library that we're at today, either school, I mean, is there any sense of that as an issue yet, or is it too soon?
You know, I think it's currently near the middle school, which services fifth through eighth graders, probably half a mile to three quarters mile away, and kids really use that. And so having that off of Wolf Road, if we were to go there, I think, again, thinking about kids walking, kids riding their bikes at that age would be a good location in parks that wouldn't have to go through versus a side of the north side of the park.
Is there a public transit animal road at all?
Pardon?
There is, I think. And then a question for you too, Catherine. If the road is closed, I, it seems to make a lot of sense for the parking, if folks are walking or biking, can they get into your building at that location if the sidewalk was provided? Go around and come over? I mean, I don't know where your building door, it's on the north side, correct?
It's actually a hard-to...
It does, okay. So if there was just a pedestrian walkway, it would be easier for people from the neighborhood to have their access to your facility?
Yes.
And then Sean brought up another point. I mean, we're too soon, we don't even know what traffic impacts are, but whether you'd have a signalized intersection or not, and that's really ODOT's call?
Yeah, you have to watch the signal.
It's really the city's call.
Well, that wasn't where I was leading, it's, who puts the bill for the signal?
If it's not one to the local, we have to date one.
And if it is one?
Sometimes you need it, depends upon what they're watching.
But anyway, we're ahead of the curve, but these are all traffic issues that have to be addressed.
I, in this day from a current flow standpoint, we don't have complaints about that intersection in terms of people coming south of Porter Creek and trying to get out on Wolf Road or complaints about it. It seems to look pretty well, but again, I defer to traffic engine.
Yeah. Thanks. The proximity to the high school is just to the west, you should go up to that, so it's to the west. We've got Bay Middle School there. And Siri, our relationship to the current library is further south, correct?
So you're the middle school and...
So the middle school has access to a road as well in the library?
It's out there.
It is, okay. So it's still...
It's still...
Same neighborhood, same area?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Pretty much.
I have a question.
Sure, please.
Yeah. The current location of the library is on land that, I mean, it doesn't join the middle school there, and it's pretty convenient even if the kids are coming from elsewhere, you know, sort of the back roads, or to the school stuff. It's also land that is already developed. If you move libraries, new locations, we are taking up green space. I'm not, I think the road change might be very valuable, but I'm not sure that that limited green area there, which maybe for pickup sports or pipeline or people just, kids running on the field, in this reservation, which is quite small and a common use, it would be a good thing to sacrifice that, despite many times. I think that evaluating traffic is what I, that the library is not, you're not gonna turn that back into anything if you decide to maybe park it off.
Did you have a question, Marty, or just a...
No, I just wanted to ask whether this is being considered, because most of this seems to be presuming that you would develop that, that land.
Again, I think we're just having a conversation, can all be out to...
Can I just comment? The building does not belong to us. The building currently belongs to the city of Bay Village. And I have to...
So it would go back to the city?
It would go back to the city, and I know the mayor is in conversation with the school district. There were some, there were some land slots in the past between the school district and the city.
So at least the school and the city then apparently have some discussion about potential future use for that.
This is not, I want Bob to be able to speak, but this is, I've been in conversation with the mayor for a number of years about the potential for a improved library facility in Bay.
First of all, I have to commend the commissioners. Brian's heard this. I work for Dominion East Ohio. I work at East 55th Street and the Shoreway, and what you have done to the lakefront is awesome. I mean, I use it, so I commend you on that. And your folks are just really personable and it's great. One thing, Siri, when she, she went through her remarks, and I'd like to say this and for your consideration, you run a system through our Cuyahoga County, and you serve all the residents of Cuyahoga County as we did. And even though we're talking about this as being the Bay Village Library, and after going through all of the redevelopment and Chairman Berry, you mentioned, what about the 12%? We'll hear from the 12%. It's a given. We've done that in every, every community we had until they saw the final result. And I would, I would tell you that if you have an opportunity to see the buildings that we built, they're all LEED certified, so they're environmentally friendly. They are built in concert with their surroundings so they fit, and we've made great efforts in order to do that. And so you can go to any branch within the system, and you will have different things in each one of those branches that is tailor-made to that particular community. But if I'm in, if I'm in a branch that doesn't have access to the video room where the green walls, where the kids can do their own videos, or they can do their own recording studio, that's within the system. And I think what, I would like you to consider at this particular case that we have, if we would go forward in a dialogue, we'd have an opportunity to build a branch with a nature center, with an art center, and something that we don't have, which is close access to the lake. We also bring with us access to a very robust fiber system that comes with all of our branches. How many, what is it, one?
A gigabit.
It's a gigabit. So you also have the possibility of turning the reservation into a wireless, external wireless network, because we've done that in some of our other communities, so it's another community benefit. So I look at this, and I understand and appreciate the councilman's remarks for Bay, but also I would ask you to look at this as, this is in addition to two great world-class systems coming together to provide an opportunity that we don't, I know we don't have, and the metro parks at this point don't have, which is the library within your, I mean, we missed it in Mayfield, which is right across the, it's close across the street. But as you go through with your deliberations and considerations, I'd ask you to think about that.
Thank you.
And from the chairman's standpoint, anything you'd like to add?
Sure, just briefly, I'll say that specifically to your, to the earlier point of what would Bay do with potentially the current site of the library. For example, in our current owner's branch, we took a, one of our sites that we knew was limited by our ability to provide services, ended up finding another parcel of land that essentially is about 10th mile down the road. The folks, and we obviously heated back the original owner's site back, they've now made that their art center. Our site is now, it's right across the street since the owner's campus is all... Our site is now, it's right across the street since the owner campus is all schools kind of influenced, very concentrated area. That's essentially, that's the kind of collaborative reuse. Same way that, you know, when we relocated from South Duquesne, that building is now being used and is now being based to be using. So there's, you know, kind of county is the kind of county where things are very built out. And so many municipalities are always looking for an opportunity to have some additional land, an additional site to do something with. So I think, I don't anticipate that you all will have the, from the potential concern for Bay, I don't think there'll be an issue with adaptive reuse of that locale. So, because we certainly think about that just the same way that those kind of stakeholders would. And I would say, just to echo Sarah and Bob's comments, is that, you know, we're also making a, we're all very concerned about workforce redevelopment in our library program. And so we have, in Garthville, we just recently opened an innovation center that houses everyone who wants to do any kind of design work. We set up an entire design center where you can pre-use of a laser printer, pre-use of a...
3D printer.
3D printer and a printer. I said laser printer. I'm beating myself. Yeah, 3D printer, sorry. Yeah, I apologize. You know, so, and, you know, the thing, I still, as an attorney, can't wrap my brain around how you end up with, you know, plastic kind of action figures from a printer. Somebody smarter than me can figure that out.
That's what you're making.
The point is that we provide, not, we provide everything from soup to nuts on workforce redevelopment. So whether it's, hey, I need a little help with my resume. Hey, I'd like, I'd like to actually make t-shirts and sell them. Somebody literally can go into our Garthville branch with a t-shirt. We cover the, you know, the actual stencil link. You put it in the machine, assuming you've put in your right configuration, then you leave with a finished product. And the only thing you've, the only cost was the t-shirt you bought from, you know, Sears or something. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that we continue to, and we continue to expand those kinds of opportunities. So that's the kind of stuff we can provide. And particularly when we're able to make these kind of revisions to the buildings that we have. Those kind of revisions allow for us to have better computer usage and space for people to deploy different types of programming, because we're able to configure things in a way that would have been as difficult in some of our older buildings. So I just ask you all to consider those kinds of things as you move forward in your deliberation.
Well, I can add, anecdotally, I know in Mayfield, there was a lot of concern with the high school on this site. And that's now been repurposed for the STEM program. I mean, I think the school, just frankly, they were looking at the availability coming online. Each community is different. And I know the branch that we have now provides the kinds of services and the meeting space that it didn't have before. So we certainly encourage, it's good to know that you've had that discussion with Bay Village. Clearly, what you can argue is, if we can make it work, fine, but we need to know that everyone else is on board with us.
Eric, Bill, anything you'd like to add?
I'm a Bay Village resident. The other thing I'd like to point out is, I'm very thankful that you're concerned about the traffic flow right in front of Lake Erie Nature and Science Center. I'd like to point out though, there's another pinch point where Porter Creek Drive goes right over to Porter Creek. And so I've got little kids that walk, well, we all, any of the kids that live in the area, traversing east and west across the city, and getting from the beach back to Wolf Road, going across that pinch point right where Porter Creek goes over, over the creek. That's a challenging spot, because you're coming down a steep grade, you've got cars going through there pretty fast, and you've got kids walking around bikes. It's another game where it's point. And that's me.
Some kind of trail. Some kind of trail that is true.
That'd be wonderful. It'd help connect the north and south part of your organization together.
There's a trail that's circling, but there's no trail over Porter Creek. It probably is 30 something feet, so it's not extremely large, but you have to migrate onto the roadway basically. And that's not...
Is there sidewalk then, or you're actually in traffic lane when you're coming over the creek?
It's tight.
It's tight, yeah. Especially if you guys are taking kids to the lake too in a group, that doesn't...
That's probably a bridge.
Yeah, the geography gets pretty...
Yeah.
Here.
I suppose along those same lines of, you know, this is a public meeting about the, about the library, the location of the library. We would hope that other considerations, this wouldn't be the end of development of the Huntington Reservation in terms of paths, walkways, and otherwise.
Oh, yeah.
The extended, that would encompass the library. I think that'd be good, just here, you pointed out, there are some other issues.
We've heard two examples to that point.
Correct. For, we have a reservation plan, so it is affecting all of our improvements over time. So this is something you, obviously.
Go ahead.
And if I can just add, in the Mayfield project, that the library and the village work together, and there's a trail system now behind the library. And it then connects up with the reservation.
There can be...
Trail connectivity. I mean, we talked about a collaboration, library, progressive, us, school, and we got in right.
And so not only is there a trail system with the library as being kind of a stop for people as necessary on that trail.
And you get bikes soon.
Right. But we also focus much of our programming around the location. So we have a children's, an interactive children's, full childhood area that is very focused on thinking about being in the wetland, connecting to the beautiful natural surroundings that we are much of a program that also is informed by our location.
Sarah, would the financing of this library be the library system? Or would be partly Bay Village and the library system?
The financing would be the responsibility of the library.
I think education is really critical, and then the partnership opportunities with all of the other organizations that are there. But I also think this, you know, it's kind of the beginning of the conversation, and I really think we need to continue this in a more, you know, public setting. And I know you guys are committed to that as well going forward, because obviously not everyone's reading our agendas and knowing that this was gonna be on the table. And sure, Jim will start to get the word out, but I think, you know, we definitely very soon want to have a community meeting, at the very least, to make sure that we understand what the residents are looking for and, you know, kind of what their reactions to this as well.
I would like to know what other sites you consider for the library, and also if you consider rebuilding on a current site, given the close location to Bay Middle School. And just how, I've seen how many students come there, right? Just like, it's a wonderful place for them.
So we're not a library just for schoolchildren. So unfortunately, we're limited when we're on the site with a school. And we have done a lot of analysis that schoolchildren do come to libraries even as they have their go-out by order. Our after-school activities from adults are very limited when we're perceived as a school library. And we need to serve it up all day long, as we've experienced with very young children. But we also are extremely landlocked on that particular site. And we had, it was not a logical location for us. It's a review, so we did not enter that discussion with the school district. Additionally, we had been, we had been visiting other public sites with the mayor over a number of years, trying to find another logical location for the library. But we were unsuccessful in finding something that could accommodate approximately 15,000 square feet of library plus the park.
What were some of the other sites that you looked at?
There were a number of sites near City Hall that we did investigate as possible locations.
See, I would think that'd be part of the public discussion, so people know that you've done that.
Right. I think the other, the other issue, if you look at the new branches that are now built, they are built in concert with sort of the community centers. If you look at Warren's Village with the YMCA next door, it's, you know, in the community concept of being close to other community access points and other things. So when you look at it, North Row, but we also know that, and the staff has told me this, that libraries are now inherent. Okay, if you look at it, you order your books online, you go book your books up. Or you take your young children, you're gonna have a day in the park, but you're also gonna take them a story time. I mean, there's, there's a lot of attractions to this community concept with this opportunity.
Well, I'd like to say, because I think that was very much a talking point, certainly in our community. I got that sense in South Duquesne, where there was a lot of pushback in the relocation. But it, and from those discussions we had 10 years ago, it was looking at the library as no longer Fort Knox. Or, you know, I mean, it's a very different. I think the more people understand, and you cut through those preconceptions, then it makes it a lot easier to discuss these issues. And I, and, excuse me, and that's, that was the reaction of, have we looked other places? We can, we can find, we can find other places, maybe. They're difficult in a landlocked community. But when you look at what we really wanna try to do from a board level perspective of making this a community resource, we like to tie it very closely to resources if we can, if it's possible. And I think that that's sort of our goal.
And I want to comment on the South Duquesne project. It was concerned because we were moving the ranch that alive from the high school and the middle school. But it has become actually an increased attractor for school students, because we are able to offer the hand services for school, you know, homework support, and pack the kids at the school. That model is being to do some.
And we've got some additional, some, because Jason essentially had known Bay College, we've got some additional connectivity and synergies there as well. So, you know, we haven't, you know, as I said the other day, you know, folks were able to go up Mayfield and turn it on green, and they found it. And it's one of our most heavily used libraries right now, more heavily used than it was when it was on Mayfield. So we've, I mean, we've been through that process, so we're really committed to working with you guys as it relates to trying to see this project.
But I think looking at the campus plan, the adaptive, if we do consider, I mean, it is parkland. And so, you know, from our board, that's, you know, our staff, you know, that was one of the big concerns that we had when we looked at. You know, is this, is this...
Is it mission appropriate?
Is it mission appropriate? And having the ability to have a regional dialogue, I think is very appropriate in the work session. And listening to our stakeholders like Lake Erie Nature and Science Center. It's got some positive attributes, you know, provincial, local, additional parking, but it's also putting more on the campus. And so I think, you know, is that the right balance? Is, is the, this, the opportunity to have a multipurpose field that's actually more useful for the community than two ball diamonds in the state that they are? And so, you know, are we looking at a relationship like Bethany Hill, where they use their maintenance facility on parkland as well? Or we're using a maintenance facility out of Sur District land? So I think it's the opportunity that's before the commissioners and before the general public to weigh in, you know, for that adaptive reuse and a conversation of this public idea in Bay.
Can I ask one more question, Sarah? The current library, what is sort of the census data on how many people come and go in a week or so? Do you have something that...
I do. I don't have those numbers with me, but I'll send them on to you. It's a very, it's not one of our busiest branches by any means. I think that it's a combination of a number of factors. Bay, Berea, and Middleburg are tired-looking buildings. They don't have, you know, they're built in a certain physical style. They don't have a lot of natural light, which is one of the number one things that people ask us for. They don't have good multipurpose rooms for groups to convene on a variety of topics. We don't have good space for kids when they're young or after school. So it's not a heavily used facility. But it's, but we have steady use. We have not seen decline in use in that facility.
I mean, would that be like maybe 100 or 200 people a day, or would it be less?
You know, I think, I'm going to guesstimate, and I think we have to see about 30,000 a month in circulation of library material. So, you know, you might see about 15,000 to 20,000 people a month coming through the doors.
That's of all the libraries?
No, of that library.
Just that one?
Oh, we have 7.9 million people come through our doors every year, so.
So that would be, and how does that compare, Catherine, to the nature center?
Very similar. We have very similar visitation numbers, a year twice as high as I do here.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we've analyzed that already. I think that, you know, for us, it's a tremendous opportunity to work with Catherine. And we really admire the work that she does. And I think we do work that could align really well. We would want to be very sure not to duplicate anything that you do. You have expertise in so many areas, but there are many things that we could do to...
So I understand you already had some discussion about not only programming, but how space could be worked with, shared.
We certainly had conversations about the potential for working together.
And we're finding the same at Bay Arts. We're collaboration on the reading and programming with people of all ages. What's fascinating for us is each time we've done a renovation, the district has supported us in the renovation of the former house. And then we recently opened up the new ceramic studio. And we're, we continue to operate at capacity.
These are synergies.
It's amazing for us, every time we make another offering. We have, just to give you an idea, one of our volunteers was an avid reader. And said, gee, maybe we should start a book club. So they put a dozen books out at the desk in one of the areas, and now we have a passive book reading program. And we're now bringing it down to kids of other ages. So it seems like every time we come up with an idea and we offer it to the community, the response has been tremendous. And I think the other thing important is that we're getting quite a bit of crossover. We kind of talked about people crossing over the river. As our arts programming has grown, we've seen more and more people come from the fiery side, from Beechwood and Orange and Chagrin, who would never think to, you know, Bay Village was a whistle stop on the way to Cedar Point. And as our program...
I gotta quit.
And as our program has grown, we just had a show, oh, we could go Friday, and more than half of the people that came to the show were from the east side of Cleveland.
Did you hear that, Mr. Moore?
I don't know.
It's always a red sign.
And so what's important to understand is, is that programming that I think the library and the nature center and Bay Arts could offer this larger community, we often think it's just these folks in Bay Village. It's amazing the distance people travel for. It's good camaraderie and social interaction and programming itself. So we can continue to celebrate that. And our numbers keep going up as we improve the type of shows. We do concerts and all kinds of things, which is, people will come and enjoy the party.
And one more question. As you know very well, the mission of Lake Erie Nature and Science Center is about introducing children and families to the outdoors, encouraging them to learn about the outdoors. Our wildlife rehabilitation program, which really takes all of these animals in, about 1,400 animals in, as well as answering about 4,000 phone calls, is a great service to the county. And we're not doing it to save animals. We're doing it to educate people about the interactions between humans and nature. We're also taking children out on hikes to teach them about habitat. So I will ask, if this is a plan, and certainly the programmatic collaborations are exciting for us. I think we'll agree on that. The opportunity for the community, connecting to Caboon Park is wonderful. But I would just ask that commissioners consider the natural resources mission of both Lake Erie Nature and Science Center and the elementary parks. And perhaps with the rest of the park, there are other areas where, which will keep the balance of green space.
Very much agree. Any other final thoughts?
If Pete and Paul don't mind, could you go back to the zoom out? You guys can help me out here. I want to make sure that you guys realize, let me do a really quick tour of Bay Village, since I'm a resident. Get that in a zoom back in. I was too hard. So the Huntington Reservation, yep? And this is Caboon Park. Zoom in a little bit more. So there's the middle school. The library is right here, okay? Again, Huntington Reservation, Lake Erie Nature and Science Center, Bay Village High School. This is an elementary school right here. This is Wolf Road. Catherine likes to call Wolf Road an educational corridor, because you've got this elementary school, and then it connects on to Avon Lake. This is Bassett Road, which would be connected to the Cocker Bassett exit off of I-90, okay? The high school, the nature center, the middle school, the library. This is City Hall. There's an elementary school here. And there's St. Rayfield's, which is the largest rec... There's an elementary school here, and there's St. Rayfield's, which is the largest or second largest Catholic school and diocese right there, and then Wolf Road on. And then you, some of the other points about north-south connection between Wolf Road and Lake Road, alls you've got is Kahoon, Dover, Porter Creek, and then these are, these are all residential dead ends. The only other connection we've got is Bassett.
Yeah, sounds good.
Paul, Pete, what did I miss? Oh, the Kahoon Socraphies, I think Pete may have mentioned, the recreational fields, multipurpose fields in Huntington, we do have new fields over on the Avon Lake, Bay Village border, so those fields don't get used in a organized manner as much as the eastern.
Thank you.
Very good.
Can I just ask, does he continue to have this conversation, and the library is eager to, you know, to continue this engagement?
I think we are all agreeing with that, we're just in a conversation.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming to us.
Thank you very much. It's been a fun meeting.
All right, we do now are going to move into an executive session for two purposes, acquisition of purchases of green property and personal, I'll come into Rose further if you want.
Yeah, and just one question, I've heard the public have mentioned, and to read the, as our document, these rights are here, so it's not for your extension, it's not for the American. Is there a motion or a difference in that? Is there a motion to be appealed?
Debbie Berry? Dan Moore?
Yeah.
We'll screen her. We will not make the action, but you are welcome to stay, we will come back to return our meeting. Thanks, everybody.